Good evening and welcome to the Foxborough Board of Selectment meeting for July 9, 2013. Tonight, 7:00 PM, we'll have citizens input. At 7:05, we'll have chairman update. 7:10 PM, public hearing, Bon Jovi concert, change of concert hours. 7:30 PM, Sharon Wasson requests to assign application for PARC grant to renovate the Payson Road recreational area. 7:40, board of selectmen, Foxborough Common Fence discussion. 7:50, Roger Hill, Matthew Monahan, speed limit on Payson Road. And if you are at home watching, that could probably go off a little early in schedule. 8:05, board of selectmen, Police Chief O'Leary, discussion on Route 1 satellite parking lot owners. That is not going to happen tonight at their request. So, I thought I saw Mr. O'Leary standing here. He does not need to hang around for that. 8:20 PM, which will also probably be early, the NRRC with an update on studies and surveys in the Pontiff Reservoir. And 8:50, executive session pending litigation, Weldon Dutton to conduct strategic session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Fire Chief Roger Hatfield, Deputy Chief John Chandler, and Town Manager Kevin Pagos. And there will also be action before executive session. So, John, would you lead us to the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is anybody here for citizens input tonight? Please come to microphone, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name's Stephanie McGowan. I live at 19 Rhodes Lane. Tonight, I was here at the last meeting. I was hoping to speak, but I had to leave before you had citizens input. Basically, over the last couple of months, reading what we read in the reporter, watching the meetings, I just couldn't keep my mouth shut anymore. I had to come up and just pretty much urge the board to hopefully, to see more objective board. I know the issues with the craft organization are difficult, and there are other towns that don't have to deal with the issues that come with licensing and what goes on with having a stadium in their town. But where there can be difficult times, we happen to be very lucky that our town is not facing the cuts that other towns have. I have friends who live in other towns and their kids are paying user fees for sports and they're cutting teachers. And right now, we haven't had to have those things, and a lot of that is because the stadium is in town. So, what I am here to urge is that hopefully, the board and the faculty from the craft organization can try to come to some agreement. I know we all want that to happen, but it just seems, as a resident, I don't know if the board realizes, but times you come across is obviously biased. And it seems like anything that comes across from the craft organization or Patriot Place is just faced with that much more of a hardship to get things passed. You know, an example I want to cite is that we watched the liquor license transfer from Piccadilly Pub over to Jake &amp; Joe's very easily. And we watched a liquor license for a grocery store at Patriot Place, Trader Joe's, go through meetings and meetings and meetings when the liquor is something that they provide, but that's not what they're known for. And, you know, as a resident, we're seeing these issues on and on. And I don't know if the board realizes, but there are many of us who don't come to the meetings who feel this way. And I just felt like it was time to come up and speak. And, you know, another question I had was, I know we just had that road race that went on up at the stadium, and I was at the last meeting, and what I didn't get to stay and finish, I watched at home. And I didn't hear, you know, we issued a license, that was an event up there with tens of thousands of people there. And I'm assuming our deductible went into place? That, no? I thought it went into place the end of June? So, our police up there, if there was a civil, right, was there anything, we couldn't be sued that day?
No.
No? Okay. I was just assuming. I know there was a third party that asked for that, not the craft, even though they hosted, asked for that. I'm not sure then what we were covered liable wise if somebody had been PC'd up there. Instead, I just figured it would fall under the same as any event that goes on up there. But I may, I stand corrected if that's the truth. I'm not sure how we were covered insurance-wise than an event that took place up there. But anyhow, it just, it seems to me that the craft organization has to do cotwheels to get anything done in this town. And where I know there is hardship with what we have to go through with that up there, there are also lots of perks and lots of money. And I'm also the parent of a child with a disability who requires special services in town, and I just feel that we're lucky that the town has been in such good financial shape, and I just hope we can continue that, you know? And I'm not worried about losing $25,000 for a soccer game. I'm worried about if we don't issue license, the millions of dollars that we receive over the course of the year, not just one event that doesn't take place up there. So, I'm urging that you guys really get together. And also, I know, I just wanted to make a note that, Mr. Gray, I just noticed that, I know you came into a mess because you weren't a board member before all of this. I was very impressed with your willingness to come up with a number, other than just the deductible number the other night. I know it didn't go through, and I know you guys had negotiations, but it did come across as willing to reach out the olive branch and maybe meet somewhere in the middle financially that worked for the craft organization, as well as the town. I mean, I want to see the town prosper, and I'm not thinking we should just hand over deductibles, but I really think you guys need to find a way to make everything work. That's it.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else for citizens input? Okay, seeing none. Quick chairman update. Asked the acting town manager, Bob Cutler, to post a meeting, which he did for July 11th at the media center at the high school, won't be here. It's at 7:30 PM, and the agenda is as follows. Executive session to conduct strategic session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Manager Kevin Pagos. 8:00 PM, board of selectmen will be having a discussion, the board will, on interim town manager. 8:15, Attorney John Davis, Attorney Richard Gellerman, discussion, I.D., indemnification, agreement, insurance. And at 8:30 PM, possibly if the board votes to continue a public hearing for the Bon Jovi, change of concert ending time. It's been posted, and now the board will take that up, because we're going to open up a public hearing right now, see if the board wants to appease that request. And we got one minute to go before that, right?
7:10.
7:10 you got?
No, we've got a minute to go.
Okay.
May I look at the agenda while you're...
I will hand it to you, Frank. How's that?
Thank you very much.
You may have it.
I will, oh, I can have it. Thank you very much.
Did you get one for the record?
Thank you.
Agenda? Do you need one?
I can get it off the web.
Okay. I think we're all set, John. If you could read the public hearing notice, I'd appreciate it.
The board of selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Massachusetts' general law, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Title of Foxborough Revised General Bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July 9, 2013, beginning at 7:10 PM, in the Andrew A. Gallagher Jr. Meeting Room, 40 South Street, to review a time change for the event end time from 11:15 PM to midnight, submitted by NPS LLC for the Bon Jovi Because We Can Tour Concert. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. All interested parties are welcome to attend. From the board of selectmen, John Gray Clerk.
We had a request to postpone this to Thursday. Since we've opened the public hearing now, does anybody want to make a motion?
A request by who?
Dan Murphy asked that we postpone this to Thursday.
Oh, they asked?
They asked. Well, and all, they are very close to having insurance in place and everything else, and they just thought it'd be a lot cleaner, is what he stated to me on the phone prior to the meeting. And we do try and appease up here as much as sometimes.
Would this be continuous?
Yeah. So, we make a motion to continue the hearing to, I believe it's 8:30, whatever, 8:30 at the high school media room.
Okay. I move that we continue the public hearing that's presently open until Thursday night. What time?
That's 8:30.
8:30 for the Bon Jovi Because We Can Tour Concert.
At the high school media room.
Yeah, at the high school media center.
Yeah.
July 11.
Yes.
Before we do that, are you, this is the week that I was away, so I came today because of last week was all screwed up. I won't be here Thursday.
Okay.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes.
I'll be here.
He'll be here. Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right. Sharon said she'd be up at 10 past. Is she in the room?
She's not.
Just, is anybody recording this meeting in the audience? If you do, there's nothing wrong with that. I just need you to notify the board that we are being recorded, because it's just a courtesy, okay?
Do you want to do some action?
Action, we go to action if Sharon gets here. Thank you.
Sharon, we're ready.
Yeah, she is. Now, we go right back to Sharon.
Sharon, we're ready.
Sharon?
Do you have a chairman's update?
I did. I just said the agenda, that was it.
I brought the box this week.
Very nice.
So, for the record, I'm Sharon Wasson. I'm the town planner. I'm here this evening to ask for the selectmen to consider signing a application form, an authorization letter, for a park acquisition and renovation grant that the planning board is submitting to the state on behalf of the town. This is specifically for the Payson Road Recreation Area. And I put on the far board the original plan. We were very fortunate that the three developers, Mr. King, Mr. Natasha, and the Finco Group, did as much work as they did before the economy went south, for lack of better words. And we've been working very hard with the new development entities to move the project forward. But as prices have gone up, we haven't seen the kinds of monies that we previously saw. We can apply to the state for a grant up to $400,000. The town will receive 58% of that money. We have to put up 42%. Bob, would you do me a huge favor and turn that board around? Yes, sir. So, we have $127,000 in donations from the developers, the bank, and others in the Payson Road area. We would respectfully go to town meeting through the FY15 capital budget process, seek another $41,000. The state share would be $232,000 for a total grant amount for $400,000. The cost breakdown, approximately $43,000 for design and engineering in FY14. The remainder of the money will go, and if you would, Bob, please put up the white board. Paving the access roads and handicap parking spaces in the two parking lots. The areas on either side of the new driveways into the baseball field parking lot, which are now filled with piles of loam and tree clippings and everything. All that will be cleaned out. It will be leveled, loamed, and seeded. It won't be built to the degree of finished athletic fields, but it will be suitable for informal play and certainly younger children to train on. The ad hoc road, which now connects the two parking lots, will be turned into a handicapped accessible path. And there's money for additional equipment in the tot lot. The sum total of that is $400,000. We think this is a great opportunity. We think it's a very competitive project. We are very fortunate that the Conservation Commission completed the open space and recreation plan, which the state has approved and makes us eligible to apply for this. And we would like your consent to move ahead with the project. Thank you.
Any questions, Sharon?
Sharon, you said that the, all you'll need from the fiscal year 2015 budget is $41,000 from the taxpayers?
That's correct. The first year, FY14, which begins last week, is for design and engineering, is the money we spend, and then the subsequent year is when we do the construction. So, the timing of it is such that we can go through the capital budget process to get what we're asking for the town's share of the matching funds.
Is there any chance that the state funds will come up short? But that's never happened before.
No, this is a dedicated from bond.
Okay, so all these numbers are solid.
The, what I've called budget numbers are solid. The estimates of the cost, the cost of oil, the cost of asphalt.
But the source of funds?
The source of funds are solid. Yes, sir.
All set, Sharon?
All set, thanks.
You all right?
Great job, Sharon. Very nice.
Sharon?
And, yeah, it's a great job, Sharon, and this would be a great asset to the town. I really applaud all the work you've done.
Well, I'd like to, we met with the Conservation Commission, the Recreation Commission, the Commission on Disabilities. We held two meetings in the neighborhood. We have a survey that's available to the public. We'll post a link on the planning board's homepage tomorrow. And it's scarcely a planning board project. I think the whole town, Recreation Commission, has been incredibly helpful. It's been a real all-hands-on-deck effort, so.
That makes it even better.
Thank you.
Same sentiments, thank you. The donations from Chestnut Green developers, are those donations or is that part of the mitigation process for the state development in the subdivisions around there?
Those are, the original special permit stated that when certain thresholds were reached, the developers would have to perform certain work. In an effort to move the project forward, the planning board instead accepted cash as the share from several of the developers in the project.
So, they're locked in?
They're locked in.
Decide not to donate it?
No, we have it already in an account that Randy's holding.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, did I read correctly that we're going to take down a building also?
We, as part of the estimate, we asked how much it would cost to take down the laundry building. It's a minimum of $65,000. Given what we felt the priorities were, to get the area cleaned up and to get it accessible and usable, it didn't fit into the $400,000 maximum amount. We will include it through the process as an optional item in the bid. Who knows? But that's our hope. I have copies of the plans if anyone in the audience would like to see what the selectmen are looking at.
Quick question. Are the parking lots that are shown here going to be lit?
At this point, no. I would think the tot lot, lot is so close to the homes that that's probably not something desirable to be lit, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice that it's coming together more and more every year down there with the additions of different things over the last 10 years, but it's the dust with the paving, the lack of pavement. Now, is it all going to be paved or pervious?
No, just the driveways in and the handicap parking spaces. If we paved the entire lots, we'd have to deal with stormwater management and all. But we're going to stabilize the dust surface, put down gravel, and fill the potholes and...
Maybe some grinds from road repairs.
Yeah, make it better.
Could I have talked to the DPW about that in the past?
Yeah, yeah. We'll do what we can do to decrease the dust, believe me.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Go to the mic, though. You've got to go to the mic.
Can I introduce myself?
Yes, you do.
Matt Monahan, 44 Payson Road. As Lotton Lane and other areas around Chestnut Green get built up, more developers come in, more developers spend more money, build more houses, make more money, do they have to pony up some funds to continue these projects?
They do, both for affordable housing and for the recreation area.
You, they can't hear you, though. You wouldn't believe the emails we get at home, tell the people, go to the mic, because we can't hear them.
You can definitely hear me. So, Maria Mecugo, 1 Neff Drive, I live right across the street from this entire area here. My concern is really security. Has there been any discussions about, not security cameras, but a lot of people come there late at night, you see them pulling in, you don't know what they're doing. So, as far as the lighted question, definitely in some ways against it, but in another way, I'm curious to see if there was any sort of, you know, security concerns that you guys took into consideration because there's going to be a lot more traffic over here now? And there's a lot of cars that in that particular area where you're not going to actually pave, they just come and spin out, just for fun, to play. So, just wondering.
That has not been brought up as an issue. One of the work items connected with the cleaning up the piles of loam is to thin out that vegetated border, the way it was done in front of the tot lot and in front of the Ernie George Field. So, it provides a screen but isn't so dense that you can't see through it. So, it's not going to feel as secluded back there once that's cleaned out.
Yeah, no, that's good.
And well, I'm sure the police can be asked to patrol the area once it's completed. I'm sure they, actually, I know they already go down.
They actually already do. They do, they definitely do. But I was just wondering, because we've just noticed a little more, you know, activity over there lately at night.
Anybody else want to be heard? Board want to entertain a motion to accept the grant? You're actually going to be signing the application.
You're authorizing the chairman to sign the application and the authorization letter.
All right. I move that the board of selectmen authorize the chairman to sign documents related to the park grant for the Payson Place Recreation Area.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? All right, okay. Five of them, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all your help.
Do you have the...
Sharon, would we want to make your way for that?
No.
Do you have the app, Mark? Excuse me?
Mark, there's an application.
There's an application that you need to sign. Is it the one that you put in my packet?
Yes.
I signed that, right?
Did you sign that, Mark?
Not yet. Page five. Okay, signature, right here, on top of mine, beside that, right here?
Above it.
Above it? Right there?
Perfect.
It's not a mortgage or anything, is it?
No.
It's my resume.
Maria.
Is it the original or a copy?
Side vote, okay. Moving on to the discussion on the Foxborough Common Fence. Is everybody here for that? Roger, are you ready for that? Come on up, please. Sorry to be so ahead of schedule tonight. We got your estimates for repairing it. Sounded like you did a thorough job. Looks like you did a thorough job, and you got some, you know, good estimates. Now, we just got to...
We've got to figure out how to pay for it. That's the question.
Okay. You're not paying for it?
I'll kick in $100 of my own money anytime. I think it's a worthy project.
Would you like to start, Roger, and just explain all the process work?
Yeah, I'll give a little brief history. We started looking at this a while back. We're down to a single casting that's remaining from the castings that were built about 30 years ago. And we have been on a mission to try to find a foundry that was suitable to be able to handle a big casting like these fence castings and do it right. And we were really fortunate to find an outfit out of Midway that can do the big castings and are willing to do it and have quoted us price.
Millbury.
Millbury, I'm sorry. And we have basically three castings that have to be made. Of course, the basic fence casting is the big, long one. Then there's a center post that has to be cast. And the last one, we do not have the core for it. That's the core that was lost by the last foundry that cast parts for that fence. So, when these guys looked at it, they said they would quote us a price to build us a new core, which will last forever, as long as we have charge of it, because the cores are worth way more than the castings.
The core that he's talking about is the cap. It's small, but if you look at the price, it's around $2,300 to send to a patent maker to have that made. And Whitman Foundry was the one that had either destroyed it or lost it, and we never got it back. So, that's why we were kind of hesitant to go that way, you know, and having our fence redone again.
So, that ties all the pieces together, is that correct?
That ties everything together.
Exactly.
It goes on the top of the center post, which ties, you know, the fence together, post to post.
And with this quote, this is just material?
Yeah, we would prefer that the tree and park do the work. This is very delicate handwork and big, heavy loads, and you need all the, the whole crew to push these sections in, but they know how to do it. They've done it before.
Roger, is it three sections that are damaged right now?
Actually, there's more. There's, I think there's four sections that are...
Four sections that are broken.
Broken.
And we probably have, I think there was a total of six granite posts that are snapped.
But you're taking the approach that you expect a plow's going to hit one 10 years from now, and you're going to...
Oh, the cars go through the common net, you know? There's accidents on the common all the time, coming up Main Street, and that's where they, that's the majority of...
If you're going to do a pour, you might as well get it done.
Yeah, and my thought was that the last time they had castings made, they had a lot of extras made, which was a damn good idea, because the cost of these things could go up, although we got very attractive pricing on these. The $2,200 isn't much more than they paid 30 years ago. So, I felt it'd be a good idea to have enough cast so that if we have to use some of the new stuff, we'll still have some in reserve for a long period of time. And we'll keep the cores, just like we have, they'll be protected inside the highway garage. And if somebody else comes along 30 years from now and has to have more made, at least they'll have the cores to do it. Same thing with the posts. There's quite a few damaged posts. We're going to try and experiment to try to pin a couple of the posts back together to see if it works, but neither Dave nor I has been super happy with the replacement posts that we've been supplied with by other outsiders. So, we made a drawing of what, you know, measured drawing of the posts, sent it out to the proposers so that they could all bid on the same thing. And we are getting back exactly what the original posts look like, so, and we're looking to buy, what, eight of those?
Eight of those.
Yeah, so, you know, with what we buy, we use five or six of those right away, right away.
Right off the bat.
But these are relatively easy to get compared to the castings. The outfit that I wanted to go to, Fletcher has been out of business for three years, but I did get three good quotes, one from Morrison-Beggs and one from Simmons, and then the one that was low was from Williams. And Williams is, they're basically doing what Fletcher used to do. They basically supply all the granite to Mass DOT and...
Just to reiterate, we're going this way because, as Jack Lothlet said a few weeks ago, we're trying to recreate the historical significance of these fence with materials.
Right.
So, we're going with cast iron.
Right.
Okay. And if, just so for a matter of timing, if, when could this foundry get started?
Anytime.
When would we need to find the money? And what would be the mechanism for allocating, or finding the money first of all, and then finding a way to move it?
I think...
So that we could pay this foundry?
I think the idea would be to get together a group of like Bob Cutler, Randy, myself, and Jack, and kind of discuss funding mechanisms. And there may be some funds available that you have control of, the board has control of. Randy knows where that stuff is. I have no idea. But with the four of us, we could probably come up with some sort of a...
The reason I ask, is this something that would have to be a warrant article, that would have to go to a Fall Town meeting? Would we have to wait that long?
Probably have to, when you want to...
Probably have to anyways.
From discussion with Randy, maybe not.
Construction period, you know, it's July, mid-July now. By the time this stuff, six to eight weeks, now you're in the fall.
But you know, we could, the good time to put that in actually is when the weather's a little cooler for us, you know what I mean? You know, if we could, if we could get this stuff made and done and we have some time in October to do some of the work, we could do some of it, you know, and then our hopes were to try to finish it up before Founder's Day of next year. And this is, you know, this isn't something that's going to get done in a week. You know, we're going to have to work at it step by step.
The foundry without the approval of the funds.
Well, we can't do that.
That's right. That's why I'm asking.
I'm precluded from doing that.
Did you have a conversation, do you need with Randy?
Yeah, I spoke to Randy, Randy Scholes about this today. And the procurement process is done correctly, but you cannot award a bid until you have a funding source. And that's why Randy was going to meet with Bob and you and come up with a funding source. And if they can't find it right now, they may borrow it from somebody's budget and then do something at Fall Town Meeting to replace it. I mean, there's things that can be done. But as long as we can find the funding source relatively soon, come back, have the board of selectmen accept it, then they can start doing the work. So there's a number of different ways of doing it.
Do you want to meet with that group too, Jimmy?
Sure, I have no problem.
That way she can, you know...
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Representatives in front of the board. We have to keep calling you in.
Yeah, no problem.
I know you love coming in front of us.
So there is no funds in your budget, correct, Roger?
No, 2013 is gone, 2014 is new. But, you know, when you do a budget, it's always allocated in advance.
Correct.
You never know whether you pick the right numbers or not until you go out and do the work. But we feel like we budget as tight as we can budget, so.
It's work in progress and it's one of the things we're coming to get completed. We're going to get it completed. Jimmy, you got anything?
No, I mean, the specifications seem to make sense and it's what we've been speaking about. Now, the foundry, I guess it's not possible to get three bids because there's no three companies.
Soul source, as a soul source.
That's what we had the issues with. We were trying to find three different places, couldn't find them anymore. And Whitman did go out. And Whitman was kind of out of it, you know, because of the way they handled our pattern in the past.
But the granite, you did go out for three bids and this is the lowest.
Randy's comfortable that the procurement was all done properly.
No, it makes complete sense.
And this foundry is close by, so I mean, you know, we'll save money by delivering them pattern.
We'll pick them up ourselves.
Picking up the materials ourselves, so, you know, we don't have to go to, you know, there was other places in the Midwest and stuff that could come up, but now you're shipping more to ship.
No, it makes complete sense. Nice work. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
My only question was on the financing of it, so it sounds like we should have an answer pretty quickly.
I think so.
Yeah, we should be able to get together over the next couple of weeks and come up with a solution. So we'll report back in, you know, one of the upcoming meetings. Jack, would you like to address the board? Seeing that you're here and you've come sit down.
Go ahead, young fellow.
You can take my seat.
No, it's just great to get this on track. I mean, right now, the numbers are high because you're getting eight sections. But it's the only practical way to do it is to get some in reserve.
Absolutely.
Because who knows when the next one crumbles. But it is great to get it on the road somehow, somewhere. We've got to come up with it. I mean, initially, it was a citizens' initiative to laid out that common and in 1971, '72, a citizens' initiative to restore it. But historically, then the town takes over and does his part. We can't always go back to private citizens. But I think we're very, very much on target right now and this sounds good. The bids are good, the foundry has a great reputation and we're close.
And you wrote a nice article when it's all done about the boys, right?
I've always, I've always given credit where it's due.
I'll give it to them. They're doing a great job.
No, these guys, and I mean, we've been at this since, what, 1971?
Seventy-one, yep.
It's, for a couple of years here, I saw more of him than my family. But the thing is, that Highway and Tree and Park in particular, when you look at the job they do around this town on the public properties, it's incredible. And their workload has increased an awful lot higher and faster than their number of employees. They do a great job. And this is, we're very much on track. Use it to my ears.
Glad we're making you happy.
In two years, you're going to have a new field of two of them all. All right, anybody else in the audience want to be heard? Seeing none. So this is basically just informational. No one would need for a motion and Ginny will attend. Could you notify Ginny when you meet?
I was due.
Get together on that. That'd be great. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger, you might as well just slide over and sit down.
All right.
Have another seat, buddy.
See you, Dave.
Next thing. Next, we have a discussion on the speed limit on Payson Road. And Matt, it's been a while, but welcome back. Anybody else that's...
I'm going to bring Liv.
If they want to sit and speak, that'd be great, you know?
And Mike will be here shortly.
Did you want me to, we can wait because I...
No, because he's going to, he'll close up.
Okay.
I'll start. I've not been at this since 1971, but I certainly feel like it. I was not born yet.
I don't think you were born in 1971.
1980.
I will not disclose.
Don't disclose.
Undisclosed.
Matt Monahan, 44 Payson Road. I don't usually bring something prepared, but this time around, I don't want to miss anything. So I did prepare a little, some remarks. Liv's going to be here to talk and Mike will be here shortly to talk. So first of all...
Sharon, get your full names.
My name's Diana.
Okay, I understand.
Try again.
Diana.
It's all that talk we had earlier about switching.
I got Matt Monahan. Matt Monahan.
Livia Banks, 35 North Street.
And Mike Casey will be the third person. So first off, thank you again for meeting with us. I continue to be impressed with the flexibility and the accessibility of this board, some of you who we spoke with a year ago when we talked about the 35 to 25 mile per hour speed limit. I've only been in the neighborhood for about three years, but Livia and Mike have been in for almost seven, if not more than seven. In June of 2012, we came to discuss the speed limit, which was posted once the work on Payson had been completed by Harding. We discussed the fact that 35 miles per hour was too high and you all voted unanimously to drop the speed limit to 25, although for those of you that were here, and remember, that was not enforceable. So it was those yellow speed signs, not the white, so they can't enforce the 25. You also agreed at that time to have the town manager look into the installation of two traffic calming platforms, which were included in the approved Payson Road reconstruction plan. These platforms were never built, although they were budgeted, they were approved for by all necessary parties, including the planning board, and they were promised to the residents of this neighborhood. Roger Hatfield spoke to Mike and I after that meeting and made it clear to us that he opposed speed bumps but strongly supported these pavement platforms. It's been over a year now and we have been patient. We have tried visual effects such as bubbles on North Street. We have tried the 25 mile per hour unenforceable speed limit signs. And we have tried vertical slow sign, signs, excuse me, placed in the middle of North Street.
That's my favorite because it did get run over. I went back to go find it because it was a crumpled mess, but I think the highway department took it before I could bring it home. It's my personal souvenir.
Put it in your garage.
But I just wanted to...
So all of these attempts were welcomed by the community and they were given an opportunity to be successful, but they were not successful. Sharon, who by the way, is nothing short of remarkable, as we saw earlier today, sent out a survey in November of 2011, which I of course filled out. Those results were overwhelming and not surprising with respect to the Payson Road and North Street residents. The number one issue that was reported were sidewalks. That was fixed. They are great. We are thankful for that. The number two issue, again, back in 2011, we are still waiting for, and that is the speed at which these cars are driving in the Payson Road and North Street area. As a side note, last Wednesday, I purchased a radar gun and captured 31 cars raced by my house between the hours of 11:50 and 11:30 a.m., as well as 4:30 and 5:00 p.m. In doing so, I documented a range of 29 miles per hour to upwards to 52 miles per hour. The average speed, based on the small sample size, was 41.3. As you can tell, this is not something we're imagining.
Can I borrow that?
You can borrow it, yeah.
I'm using it next. All right. So what we thought we could do is, just kind of, before we get into the exact ask, because I think, you know, Payson was on there, but this is really more of a neighborhood issue that we're dealing with. You want to take a little trip down memory lane? We've been talking about this for years, on and off. And I think, you know, the good news is, we've made some progress. But I think, you know, as we took a step back and started to think about the growth of the community and all the factors that are influencing both Payson North and just the whole situation that we're in with... Mike's going to join us. With the increased resident plus traffic, it's really become the live-work-play community that many of us were sold on. And I don't think we were sold a bill of goods when we moved in. It has become that. You've got Chestnut Green, you have the playgrounds, and we all live and truly are becoming a community. But when you take a look at the residential growth, which has been exponential since 2006, just in our little footprint of North, Cross and Chestnut, we've gone from four residences. So going back to 2006, there wasn't anything here, to 76 as of today. That's an incredible amount of growth. And the expansion is going to continue. We know that over on Lawton Lane, they're continuing to build. I'm not sure what the forecast is for the next 12 to 18 months, but I can only imagine it's going to continue, which is goodness. Patriot Place, that's calm, it's grown and it's continuing to grow. That is not just a town destination, that's an area destination. And North Street especially, as is Payson, becomes a cut through for those who are coming from different areas. The local business expansion. It's great to have the offices at Chestnut Green and to have the restaurants and the shops. And we walk to them as a community, which is part of what we all wanted. But it's both a walking and driving neighborhood destination as well. And then coupled with the enhanced community, the sidewalks that were mentioned earlier has been an awakening, I think, for all of us in the area. You actually see people out now. And we're all walking to each other's homes and we're walking to the playgrounds. And it's great. But I guarantee every person who's come to support this cause has a story to tell about their harrowing experiences, whether it's North Street or Payson, that they've had with themselves, their children or their grandchildren. And I'm not making this up. Tonight, I swung by my house on North Street to brush my teeth, because I figured I should before I came. And I'm not joking, as I put my brakes on to turn into the driveway, somebody went to my left, over the bubbles, and almost went head on because somebody coming up that hill off the railroad tracks was going fast. And they all had to slam on the brakes. I'm not making it up, I swear. And I was like, oh my God, you have to be kidding me. So obviously, a lot of growth, but I think we still have to address the issue. If you look on the next slide, it's just really telling as you kind of map out our neighborhood, truly where we've had such growth. This doesn't include Chestnut Green Apartments. I wasn't able to get ahold of anybody to give me talent. Obviously, you guys have access to that from a town standpoint and a census standpoint. So, you know, when we look at just how much it's grown, and if you used an estimate of three people per residence in the growth that we've seen, it could be at least 228 people that have been added in our neighborhood. Obviously, there's more and there's less. We've had babies, as many of us have moved here and stayed. But I think it's just telling that it's growing, but the traffic and the safety issue hasn't changed with some of that growth. So kind of moving into the last slide of how we're framing up our ask here is, yes, we've made steady progress and you guys have been very receptive, but the additional mitigation for safety is still needed. We've done the repaving, the grading, and the intersection at Cross and Payson also was improved, which has done some helping. The bubbles have not worked. We did agree we would try it and we were open to that, you know, but it hasn't helped. And I think the sign getting mangled and run over, along with the woman who ran into the telephone pole because she was texting, all of those things are telling. What if one of our kids had been there when she was speeding and going too fast and slams right into the pole? It's those kinds of things, especially, I don't know if some of our Lawton Lane neighbors are here, but they did give me some feedback and I've experienced it. Even walking from Lawton Lane to cross North Street to get to the ball fields, nobody stops. So not only are they speeding, you have to literally stand physically in the middle of the road with your children and hope that they stop. And they do go around you, which is horrifying when you have young kids that are with you. What was removed, we talked about some of the calming measures that came out. So what is the ask? This isn't just about Payson. This is a neighborhood ask that we are coming to you guys for. It's calming measures on Payson, it's calming measures on North, and it's crosswalks at the Lawton Lane intersections that we're looking for. And there's case studies that could be used for consideration. In Sharon, by, on East Foxborough Street by Sampson Park, they've got those rubber hump. They're like the little mini sort of speed bumps. It is enough to slow you down, but it's not enough to rip out your suspension. And I can't tell if they're removable. I tried to get out of my car, but I would have got hit by somebody when I was trying to inspect it. But they have plows, they have emergency vehicles, and it's a residential area with ball fields as well. And then Arlington, Virginia, you know, and Mike and I talking, that's a great example. They have them everywhere. That's a major metropolis. There's a lot of vehicular traffic plus pedestrian traffic. So it can be done. And that's what we're here to ask you for is, what can we do as our next steps in helping to bring the community to the next level? Because obviously, with the improvement on the fields, we're making that progress, but we have one more step to do.
I'll just throw in another piece before Mike talks. I mean, Liv is talking about the residents in this area. But as these fields continue to grow, as we continue to improve the fields and add to them, you're talking about lacrosse, baseball, softball, football, soccer. All of these kids are coming to this area. This is sort of a new destination. And you're talking about a lot of children and a lot of families. So it's not just about the residents, it's about the safety of the actual visitors to the Payson Road area as well.
So, turn Jim's mic, please.
Hi, I'm Mike Casey of 40 Payson Road. Many of you are familiar with me as I've been, you know, down here over the past, I think it's just six years I've been talking to the board about this and, you know, hitching onto some things that Liv and Matt have said probably previously. And my apologies for being a little bit late. Were you guys actually running a little early? Good for you. You know, this began a long time ago with trying to discuss what was a really horrible intersection at Cross, North, Payson. And I know the planning board had come up with the roundabout, which was a really, really unpopular idea for many in the area. And though the planning board, to their credit, made clear that that was the safest, they did also comment that, you know, after the fact, what would have been the next safest was the teed intersection that separated Payson from ending Cross from Cross Street, which I think, as the record shows, nearly the entire neighborhood was unanimously in favor of. And it didn't happen because of the objections of a party that isn't a resident anymore, whereas all those families that are in favor, I can say for a fact, are still here with children growing up in this community. With that being said, an effort by the board to mitigate some of those concerns about what was our desire to change that intersection, make it more of a community down the Payson Road and the field area of this community, we were promised in the final plan for the redesign of Payson and budgeted for the speed tables. And the record also shows that those speed tables were removed in a fashion that, with all due respect to Roger, didn't happen the way that it should have occurred in terms of going to the selectmen before such a major change and that repaving and finishing of Payson occurred. Therefore, eliminating what, you know, was our kind of, what we were resigned to in a way after we didn't get the teed intersection to say, well, at least we have some speed tables. That was now gone as well. And I think that we've been extremely patient because at that time, when we didn't get the speed tables, they said, well, the street's been narrowed with the decrease in the width of Payson from, I think, 32 feet down to 25 feet, you know, that should work. And that has not worked. And, you know, coupling this with the vast growth, you know, to be honest with you, it's challenging to me to stay calm about this topic when I feel as if we've been extremely reasonable in terms of coming to the board each and every time this has come up in good faith to try to come up with a way that this neighborhood will be viewed in that way and not be viewed in a way that it used to be dense forest, major cut through. I understand that. And I understand that we are new to this area. I understand that, and I understand that we are new to this area. But I also know that we have shown and we plan to be here for a long time, and this is a neighborhood now, it's not a cut through. And I think that it's inherent upon the town and the board to view it in that way and finally take the steps that have been promised, to view it, one, as a neighborhood, and, two, as a priority to make sure that it's safe. And I think, you know, we're welcoming to all this growth, because it's not only nice for us, but I think it's a nice way to showcase Foxborough and the community that it is. And I think it's great when there's the events down at the fields, and there will be more events as this area gets cleaned up, hopefully with the grant if we get it. But, you know, we're here tonight to try to represent, again, a young community that really loves this town and has loved the roots that we've put down and are going to be here for a very long time, and we're, you know, hoping that we're moving vastly forward, and I can't remember the gentleman's name from the highway department, but, you know, I hope this is truly low-hanging fruit to actually change the viewpoint of this area as a neighborhood and take steps that should be taken to make it safer. And I agree with Liv, you know, I know that a lot of the focus has always been on Payson, but North Street is a nightmare, and you actually feel the suction of cars when they pass you. And I have three young kids, and anyone will tell you, they see me out all the time, walking the kids, crossing Lawton, over to Lawton Lane, walking around Lawton Lane. And, you know, I don't see any reason why there isn't crosswalks, number one. And number two, why not throw stop signs up? They're in every major city around the state on a major straight line, thoroughfare, they're in Newton, they're in Brookline, they're in downtown Boston. Put stop signs up. Why not? You know, the setbacks from those houses, especially the crosswalk that's at the, what would be nice for there to be a crosswalk at the end of Lawton Lane entrance to North Street toward the police station, there's no reason there shouldn't be a stop sign and crosswalk there. The stopping and going of traffic, there's a huge setback for any home around in that area in terms of noise, and that speedway needs to be broken up, as well as the fact that Payson is a nice smooth road that people love to fly down, and there's going to be more children coming in this area, and there's already a lot of children that live in the area that really deserve the respect of the town and the selectmen to do something that has been promised for a very long time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well said by everybody. Roger, do you want to reply to any of this? Is anything overlooked in do, or?
All I can tell you is that, at the time I made the decision not to put the speed plateaus on Payson Road, the reason for it was and continues to be that the locations that were shown on the plan for those speed plateaus were in an area where the grades are very flat. And in the winter, these speed plateaus went right out, almost to the gutter line. There was only a one-foot space between where the ramp up to the speed plateau started and the edging or the curbing itself, which is where the water goes in the summer. But in the winter, the water freezes on the uphill side of the speed plateaus, and as it freezes, it freezes and blocks that waterway from the water on the high side to get to the low side. And that's what happens every time you try to put these in in a flat area. If you're on a steep enough grade, the water will continue to flow. But that area where they had them designed was very flat. And I talked to Jim about this, and you had the same thoughts that I did at the time. We talked about the reasons why. I'm not against them, but what I'm saying is they need to be in a different spot than where they were set up in the first place. With regard to stop signs, y'all know, I think all the selectmen know, that a stop sign is a regulatory sign and requires that warrants be met and that stop signs be approved, not only by us, but by the Registry of Motor Vehicles and Mass DOT, before they can be installed. Stop signs have positives and they have negatives. The negative is that they actually create rear-end collisions, because people don't observe them all the time, and when a car starts, that guy thinks he's going to go right through, and he hits the other guy in the back end. The positives are that they do really slow the traffic down, because that's what they're designed to do. In big cities where they have tight intersections that are close together, it's very easy to obtain warrants for stop signs, but out here, it's not so easy. And the police can't enforce them unless they are warranted, unless they are built according to the standards that are required. So just putting them up is probably not a wise idea, because we won't be able to enforce them in court. We'll lose every time when we go to court. However, that doesn't say that, you know, the board can do what they want to do with signs. If you want to throw up signs that are unenforceable, it can be done. I wouldn't encourage it, because you'd incur liability from potential collisions and things like that, but, you know, that's the stop sign issue. I'd like to see, I'd like to talk to the planning board about possible alternatives like the removable plateaus, and I don't know enough about those to give you any kind of a report on them. I can tell you that if they are removable, that means manpower twice a year, one in the fall to take them up and in the spring to put them back down. And we don't have a lot of manpower. Highway has seven people right now, so it's not easy to be able to do that. And the other thing I can tell you for sure is, if we start doing this, it's the tip of the iceberg. You will have people in here night after night on lots of streets.
Oh, he's not listening.
Lots of streets in town, you know that. So, you know, I'm not opposed to listening. I'll be perfectly willing to work with the folks up there, I'm sure the chief would be, I'm sure the planning board would be. I think the planning board has some ideas that might work, so maybe that's what we need to do. Go forward with a spirit of cooperation, see if we can come up with a system that's workable, and, you know, see what we can do to take care of some of the problems. Remember that North Street is really, truly, an arterial street in the town of Foxborough, and it's going to be difficult to get approval to do things there because of that. But, you know, not impossible.
I think that we want to continue to ask.
Oh.
You can do things on Beach Street.
I did want to, I did want to address the crosswalks. And the only reason we didn't paint the crosswalks when we did North Street is that Lawton Lane has to build their sidewalk and their handicap ramp on their side of the street.
Right.
For us to be able to paint the walks.
And they're almost done. They're getting there.
Yeah, and then we won't have any trouble painting the walks.
I still don't think people will stop. I have had people go around me with my four and five-year-olds on bikes.
They don't even stop on the common where we've got pedestrian priority, so.
I think what we're asking for is we want to reopen the discussion and explore. I think.
Yep.
Our biggest fear in this community is we're going to come to you one day and say, we told you so, because somebody got seriously injured. There is just so much, and I get it, then everyone comes with their handout. I understand the manpower. You know, I get similar asks in my job, I only have so many people, but there's got to be a way to find a solution and, you know, weighing the pros and cons.
That I think we can do, but we need to, we need to come up with a wise solution that is workable and permissible.
Yeah.
So Roger, are you recommending that you, Sharon, and a group of the neighborhood representatives meet?
Get together.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, we'll see if we can come up with some ideas. I want to look at those laydowns to see what they look like.
Yeah.
Come in Sharon, she, I know exactly what she's talking about.
Yeah, by that ball field.
By the soccer field.
And those are removable.
I think they are.
They take them up in the winter.
They put them back and forth, that turns into East Foxborough Street, the one she's right across from the police station.
Oh, I know where you're at.
You take that right. And then there's also some after Shaw's, you take the right into that, towards Independence, can't afford.
Yeah, they have similar traffic issues there too, I think.
Right, well, that's a real straightaway there. I mean, that thing's forever.
Yeah.
Between, you know, mechanic, mechanic street there and to finally go past, yeah, yeah, there are a couple of. I thought they did do the teed intersection, and Payson comes out as teed off now to, it's not exactly what you.
No, they originally, I remember they were going to abandon that last lot that now has a house on it.
Right.
Completely separate the streets, they're offset that intersection.
Right.
Yeah, it's designed, it was designed to line up with the center line of Cross Street.
I tell you, go back to when this board, I was on the board when we talked about that roundup, I was in favor of that roundabout, because I thought it was the best solution possible, and it got voted down three to two. And the mitigation money too was a problem to, I don't even remember, did we ever even get the money, the mitigation money for that? It was a quarter of a million dollars.
Set the P word.
Mitigation from the Patriots Place.
From Patriots Place, but.
Could just add a couple of things in, you know.
But to finish that point, if that had been done, I think you'd have a lot more calmer area. I mean, in hindsight, the neighbors worried about lights and windows and everything else, and now you've got to, still get the highway on North Street, and there's no doubt about it. And we all got to check ourselves in neighborhoods. I mean, we're going down, you're busy, and you look down, you look, whoa, I'm doing 40.
Yeah.
You know, and you slow right down.
It's easy.
It's easy to forget in your busy day, but.
Both over the railroad tracks.
I mean, that was Mass Highway Engineers and everything that said that was the best scenario. I don't know if we can go back to that, because that house is there now, obviously, it's gone up.
No, can't.
So, that was, that was a, that was bad.
My point in bringing that up is I think we have always come here in a spirit of cooperation, and, you know, I wanted to underline that point, that I think we've been extremely cooperative throughout this process, to say the least. And, you know, in terms of, I don't want to have something thrown out there like, we need a petition to get a stop sign, and, oh, well, then we don't do it. I mean, then let's find out the process to go through. I mean, I'd be more than willing to do the legwork, to find out what the petition process is and try to help facilitate that, because it's important, and I don't think that, lastly, that, you know, the board is here to help the community become a better community always, and we should always be seeking to get better. And if that means that there's going to be other areas of our community that comes with their quote-unquote "handout," then so be it, because it's always in the spirit of trying to make a better community. And back to the first point, being cooperative, I mean, I don't think this is, you know, Liv termed it an ask, and I look at it as, you know, when things fell through, that it was acknowledged, number one, roundabout didn't go in, would've been the safest. Number two, the next thing the planning board did, endorse it, but said, hey, it's a pretty darn good idea to offset Cross from Payson, a pretty darn good idea, that didn't go through either because of one voice versus 10 families that are here still. For the life of me, I will never understand that decision. That was a 5-0 decision against that. You know, and so then we were promised as part of that, oh, you're going to get speed tables. So I think we've been extremely cooperative in understanding and patient, and now what we're looking at is continued evidence of significant growth, which, on top of the significant growth in the immediate community, bring the people that will come to these nice field areas. We're happy to have them, but we should be doing that cognizant of the fact that we need to be doing something to make sure that we're being safe about it. And those that come into this area are, can assure that their children be safe, those that live there that walk down there can assure their children be safe, and, you know, we continue to be cooperative in understanding, but it's something that we need to move on after this being over six years of talking.
Yeah, I mean, my last point to that similar point is, we've been talking about this too long. Like, I'm, you're probably sick of hearing about Payson Road. I'm sick of talking about Payson Road. This guy's got to be sick of talking about Payson Road and the speed.
Well, let's keep talking.
It's, we've got to stop talking. Let's do something about this. We've tried things, we've been patient, we've piloted all of these different things which we've talked about, nothing has worked.
I would say.
I'm done talking about it.
Yeah, I would say, you know, with that 5-0 aspect where everybody is in favor, but the one voice seemed to sway, I did say at that meeting, sometimes we have to look at things as the 80/20 rule. I do believe I was characterized as a wolf trying to, wolf with a sheep trying to decide what to eat for dinner. I believe that was, essentially, I was called the wolf.
Two wolves and a sheep shouldn't decide what's for dinner. That was the actual comment.
Yeah, I was like, okay. But, I mean, I think we're to the point where I get the resources, I get the money, but we've got to do what's right, and it may not be the best thing for every person, and everybody may not love it, but we need to do the safe thing. And I think we've got to get to that 80/20, instead of the 100%, everybody's going to hold hands in the entire neighborhood in a five-mile radius and hug.
And sing songs.
Because we're not going to get to that.
Did I hear you right when you said that the average radar speed you clocked was 41 miles an hour? Was that on Payson or North?
Payson.
I'm barring it for North Street. I'm not joking.
I have not even touched on North.
North, I guarantee you, will blow the doors off of that.
You know, you know that if, if a study is done to speed zone that street, that's exactly how they do it.
That would be the new, but we're not asking for a study.
The speed limit wouldn't be set at 41, because that's the average speed. It will be set at the 85th percentile speed, which is a lot higher than 41.
Which is what we talked about at a previous meeting, which is why we're not asking for a formal speed study. This is an informal study. I'm an informal study. There's nothing formal about this.
Yeah, my rhetoric is not.
But I think, I mean, it's from a sporting goods store. But I think what it's illustrating is we have a problem, and I absolutely am going to borrow it and use it on North Street, I think, because it will be comical at how fast people go, but again, it will continue the conversation.
Okay. Anybody from the board, Jim?
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything that you guys are saying. Actually, before I was a selectman, I think Mark, you were on the board, I came in with charts and basically had issues with the crosswalks that they put, you know, they put the crosswalk here and the light over there, it just didn't make sense. And I came back, and the board listened, and they moved the lights. I live off of North Street, and I've got multiple teams that play on Payson Road, and I've seen, and it's such as Foxborough people that come, they come in droves, but it's people from other towns, and they're rushing to get to a 5:30 game or whatever. So it's certainly a unique situation, because it's a hospital redevelopment, so we put in retail, we put in housing, and in dense, we put in playing fields, so we put all this stuff. And I think the planning board did anticipate that it was a unique situation, because they put the speed bumps or the tables, and maybe they weren't designed to the nth degree and they, you know, knowing, let me stick back a little bit. I've had projects where I've proposed speed bumps, so you can understand what the negatives are. Whoever's house is where that speed bump is, you're going to hear it 24/7, you're going to have cars and trucks, you're going to hear the banging, you're going to hear the screeching. You're going to see an increase in traffic probably on Payson, because if you're coming up Chestnut, and you have to go through three speed bumps, you're going to go to the rotary, and you're going to go down a North Street. So the people on North Street are going to see increased traffic. You're probably going to have to put in some type of catch basins, because if it's flat and freezing, you're going to have to collect the water and put it someplace.
I think we can change the location of, yeah.
But I think at the, at the end of the day, I mean, we can say, let's, you know, put it into another committee for study, but it's, you know, the planning board had a plan, it wasn't implemented, we tried something else. I think at the very minimal, we need to put up something temporary, you know, we can pull it up in the winter if we have to, but put something temporary to see how that works. The biggest hurdle, I think, was you need to speak to Chief Hatfield, because if the fire trucks can't get over with their clearance at a certain speed, then it's kind of dead in the water for a while. Then you go to the long, you know, that's why I think you're doing the tables rather than the speed bumps. But if Sharon and the planning board are in here looking for more grants, for more improvements to that area, and housing is still being built in Chestnut, I don't want to be at this table when they said, you know, should've, could've, would've done something, and now it's too late. Because I honestly, I go through there 10 times a day, and I speed, you know, I think everyone does, because it's just, you know, you get it from point A to point B, and there's not a lot going on during the day, and it happens, I see it, and I see North Street even worse. So, you know, I think, Roger, nice try on the chamfering in the signs, but it just didn't work. So I think we've got to, you know, take a serious look at, of addressing it, and there's going to be a cost to it, and it's got to come out of somebody's budget, but I don't want to put it into study and wait another year.
Gordon, I spoke to Gordon today, and Gordon says that Bill Greeter has an idea for something different. Gordon?
Gordon Graef from the planning board. And the first reason for stepping up was to answer the question of where that mitigation money went. It did go through a list of improvements to streets and sidewalks in the general area. The planning board has, is in complete agreement with the residents of the area, that the speed conditions on North Street and Payson Road are totally unacceptable. There are a number of reasons how the speed bumps disappeared, they were in our plan, we wanted them, we still want them. We do believe that there are, as I mentioned to Roger, want to talk to him today, I do believe that the planning board has a couple of proposed alternatives that would, in effect, do the same thing, would be a speed bump, but would be one that would meet Roger's concerns, and we believe would meet both Rogers', I'm sorry, Roger Hill and Roger Hatfield.[1768.51] I think that these people have been patient. We believe they should not be waiting anymore. I think the proposals, there are proposals out, at least for Payson Road. Getting back to North Street, we're not going to solve that in one minute. But I do believe that, that two meetings from tonight, the planning board working with Roger and the neighbors can come back with a proposal that Roger, the two Rogers can accept, and that I think will do a lot of the things that we promised as a town to these residents, and we have not given them. We do have some problems here, they do need to be fixed. We're anxious to work. We were as upset as the residents when the speed bumps disappeared, and I understand all of the confusion that went on at that time, but that's history. Okay? It's just like, I'm one of the biggest proponents of the roundabout, as you well know, and, and I still say that that would have been one of the greatest solutions, but not, it's not going to stop the problem of the speeding on Payson Road. We have to do something additional. We've got children coming down there, let's do it, let's get it done before snow flies this year. There's no reason that we can't do it. The issue on North Street, I think that's going to take more time, and we don't have the solution to how you slow down a nice straight road. I might suggest, facetiously perhaps, let's put a roundabout in the middle of it, but I don't... But somehow, I don't think I'd get too far with that idea. So, with that, we do want to work, Bill and I have been working this issue, Bill Greer, he was not able to be here tonight. We do want to work with Rod, the two Rogers, with the neighbors, and with this board. And now we have, there have been a lot of discussions with Jim, because Jim is down in that area so much. And I do believe that by two, we'd like to be on the agenda, two meetings from now, two, on your regular schedule every couple of weeks, not if you have a couple of special meetings in the next week. And I think by then, we should have something that all parties can agree is a reasonable effort, so.
Any other questions from the board, then?
Just for one comment.
Go ahead, John.
It's, it's kind of refreshing to hear that area, which was once sort of a backwater wasteland, is a community. And this, this discussion was pretty nice, given that I think everyone's realizing that it's, it's built up, it's evolved, and it's now a lot of families, and I think it's being treated as a community. So, this was, this was encouraging, because I'm, I'm not privy to all the discussions that took place, but I, I understand your frustrations if it's been six years asking. I think you've got a lot of support.
Great.
And it's refreshing when you come in with well thought out, polite graphics and, and reasons why you're doing it rather than I want and I deserve, because, you know, it's, I thought it was, you did a nice job, and I appreciate your time.
As always.
You're welcome.
Can we, can we ask that...
No.
Payson and North be a joint conversation? I think...
I think we need to handle one at a time.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you can't start the process for the other one right away, but I think it was well said. You guys get together, the planning board plans on addressing the situation. Roger, I think, I think in the long run, you're going to get your platforms. I think that's what's going to happen.
Okay.
I'd like to see it made, made of one way, myself, just one way out, but it's another thing you have to deal with the state. You know, you, you talk about roads, seriously, for forty years now, the worst intersection used to be right down at DQ, right there.
Yeah.
And then that disappeared because of that whole development. Then you go down to the corner of Central Street and 140.
Central and Commerce.
And then Walnut, the worst intersections we have, and we haven't been able to get the state to move on those in decades. So if we got some jurisdiction, I don't think the board's going to wait for the state, you know. I wouldn't want to throw up stop signs, it's going to make us liable for rear-end collision, but I think we...
Let's explore other things.
Right. So, you got your expert here, and I'm very confident in Roger and the planning board, so see what their agendas are supposed to get there, and we'll schedule you back here in one month. Okay?
All right.
Until then, please keep your neighborhoods as safe as possible. I understand your frustration. I don't have sidewalks. And it's, it takes a lot of restraint, doesn't it?
Sorry if I was shaking my fist at you when you've been speeding by.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Take care.
Could I say something, please, guys?
Oh, sure.
I live in, on Rhodes Lane, which is in Summerfield, and we have the same issues like a lot of places in town. Unfortunately, we have to handle it ourselves, because it's private in there. And we, we butt heads with the people who live in Cannon Forge, who are kind of off with little roads, who don't see the traffic that those of us in Summerfield see. They don't see the need for, for the problem to be fixed. Us with young children walking, see, see the problem. One thing I can tell you is the stops, we have stop signs in there that aren't enforceable. It will piss you off even more. Once people get wind that they're not enforceable, they blow through them, and then you just watch them blow through, and you say to yourself, there's a stop sign. But it gets, word gets around that they're not enforceable, and I know our, our management company works with the police department, and they've tried their best. What I will say is, what we've just recently done is, once the crosswalks can be painted, we, we have someone on our board who did some research, the best, because we have to do it ourselves, the town doesn't do that for us. There's something with the colors, we just put a new one with big red and yellow, and we did put those, those signs, and they weren't cheap, I think they run like eight hundred dollars, which, for us, because we're paying for them, they come out of the tall, the ones that come off the ground. And what they do is, now the people, because there's something there, we have seen in the last six months, a, it still happens, we're not completely satisfied, but we have seen the difference, and that's probably stuff that the town can do for you sooner than later.
And that's what part of what we tried.
Yeah.
We had the sign...
Oh, and that, that didn't work.
That's one that got mangled.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. I heard you saying the bubble. I didn't know what the bubble was. Okay. Yeah.
So we've tried, you know, Roger had some great suggestions. Try the visual, try the sign.
Yeah, my heart goes out to you, because as listening to you, I, I have an autistic child. I've got him in one hand, the dog in the other hand, and you're crossing, you're in stop signs in the sidewalk, and people drive around you. And, and so it happens in there, but we have seen a difference, unfortunately, maybe, maybe you guys are too busy a road to see the impact, the, the difference that we have finally seen.
Have they go seventy?
Yeah, we have that, that from Sharon Woods, from Shaw's, the straight through, and it's, it's the same thing, it's speeding, but, good luck. But, I mean, that has worked for us. The, the colored stop signs has decreed a little bit, so, just want to kind of give you guys, that's easy stuff to work on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi.
Hi, you need the address for the record, please?
Yes, it's sixteen Lawton Lane. So I'm speaking more, oh, I'm so glad that the neighbors on Payson mentioned this, I hate that. Just because we are in Lawton Lane, and we have right now, there's twenty kids in there right now, and they all love to go down to the fields, the playground, their friends on Payson, and it's a nightmare. And not only is it a nightmare because of what they're explaining, you know, the bus won't go down Lawton Lane, so we've been literally at the bus stop, which waits on North, and what you have to do is, the stop sign comes out, you stand there in the middle of the street, and depending on the day, people go by, and they just don't even notice there's a stop sign, the bus is there, there's a line of kids, so it's only going to get worse. So I just really plead with you, don't let North Street become a six-year patient, Payson issue, because Lawton Lane's going to come out just like this, because we're dealing with it already. I mean, literally, I've never seen people not stop when they see kids and families and dogs. I'm like, oh my gosh, they're not slowing down. So, it's so emotional, because like, oh my gosh, it's a great town, and we love it, but we're new to the town, we moved in in December, and I hate, I'm like, oh my gosh, I make all the kids stop before you get to the fire hydrant, then we're going to have to hold hands, and you're, you're looking around, you're like, what, it's not main highway. It shouldn't be like that. So I really hope you don't put North another six years down the road. That's what I want to say. Thanks.
Maria McHugo, one Neff Drive. So I just want to thank these guys, Matt, Livia, and Mike, for proposing this to you guys. As we've all talked about, I won't beat a dead horse, it's been a long time. We live on Neff Drive, the first house, we're crossing the street to go to the park all the time, people are flying by. It's a no-brainer to me, and I, I'm thrilled that you're hearing that. It's about safety, it's not, I want and I need, it's about safety. I want and I need a safe area for my children to cross, so I can go to Livia's house and walk down North Street and not worry about getting hit by a car, because they're flying down the road. That's what it's all about for me and my family, and it's, it's what it's about for these families as well, Lawton Lane included, and, and I sort of second that. I definitely hope that North Street is continuing to be considered, and obviously, you know, you'll work towards the goal of these measures. And I know nothing's figured out, it will be worked out, but I'm just really happy to hear that it's, you know, a top priority on the agenda, because it's about safety. It's not about what I want and what I need, so.
We'll see you in one month.
All right.
Thank you. So Bob, could you put that on to the agenda?
I'll freshen this up and make it look different when we come back.
Great job.
Thanks. Okay. And, Chief O'Leary, we're not, we're not talking, are we talking about parking laws tonight or not?
No, I was just informed by one of the members of the Business Association. I guess they asked for continuance, for another ninth meeting tomorrow. Myself and Chief O'Leary pulled the parking, and I guess that's why they found it's cool.
Okay, thank you. So we're not going to talk about discussion on satellite parking laws tonight?
No, but I, could I make a request?
Oh, yes, right, Ginny, please.
I just wanted to make a request of the, of the other selectmen to please review the, the present regulations and then the revised regulations, if you could review those, please. And then if there, if you have any questions on any particular numbers, to let me know, like by email. The meeting is at three o'clock tomorrow afternoon at the McGinty Room, so, I mean, I have some concerns of my own on these things, so I'd like to hear from, from you, your concerns.
Okay, great, thank you, Ginny.
So Ginny, last, in the last packet, there was a document that had a comparison to the old and the new. This packet, is it, is this the same one, the exact same one as last time?
Yeah.
All right.
So Mark, is that going to be scheduled to a particular meeting?
That was for two weeks.
Two weeks.
At the last meeting, they asked me to schedule two meetings, one in two weeks for just a quick discussion, and then to move the public hearing to a month. So the public hearing will be at the next scheduled meeting in two weeks, I believe the twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Yeah. So wherever that fits in. And then we'll get to the bottom of that. Okay. Next, everybody all set with that? Okay, next, we have the representatives from the NRRC giving us a little report, and they can come forward, that would be fantastic. We are only two minutes behind schedule.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third for...
Yeah, further ahead, but...
No. The satellite park.
The, the Payson Road will be the first meeting in August.
We all got your packet, and it was a quick read, it was an informal read, and we appreciate that, Kim. Thanks for getting that to us. But, so when we get started, could you start from the left, introduce yourself, and your address and record?
Mike Bingham with Apex Companies. I live in Belkirk, Mass.
Rick Lewis, five Monroe Street, I'm with NR, sorry, NRRC.
Sheila Warner, ninety Ridge Road, NRRC.
Kim Mellon, one Monroe Street.
Okay, who would like to start tonight?
Actually, we, I want to go ahead, and we've brought cleaner copies with color attachments for the executive summary and a report that was prepared by Apex.
I did just notice a couple of the figures are not full.
I'll pass these to the right, so you don't have to move. One more, yeah.
We've, actually, let me tee this up a little bit. We've got a number of topics we want to cover, and this is something we feel like we probably should be doing once or twice a year, is coming before the board of selectmen and giving you guys updates on the various projects that we're involved in, and some of the things that are, have been happening with the reservoir and, and associated with the reservoir. So, we, we, last year, we undertook a study for some of the contamination levels in the sediments, and the spread of contamination in the sediments. We've also are doing other weed control programs and other educational programs around the reservoir and stuff. So, this is kind of an update, and, like I said, we've got another, a number of little topics that we'd like to just let you know what we're doing and what we're involved in, and ask for your support. So, let's start off with this.
So Apex was contracted to conduct this study on the reservoir, and it was two main prongs. The first prong was to actually test and sample the sediment, take samples of the sediment and analyze them for cadmium, which is the main contaminant of concern here. And they did take those samples in approximate locations as samples collected in nineteen ninety-eight, so they could compare, you know, the concentrations. You don't want to take them in the exact same location, because the chances are that you want it more random, you know, but they were in close proximity for, like, kind of graphs on the chart there show the, the two different, nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand twelve sample events for each one of those areas. The second part of the test that they did was testing the flux between the sediment and the groundwater, it was in the surface water, basically pond water, reservoir water. What they did is, in a laboratory, they took samples of actual samples from the reservoir, sediment samples, and under controlled laboratory conditions, they tested four different environments, aerobic conditions and anaerobic conditions, and then a summertime temperature and a fall or a spring temperature. So, so there's four actual tests that they did for each one of those things. And basically, you know, the results of that determined that there was cadmium coming out of, into solution from the sediment under those kinds of conditions. And, and it's got some of the graphs that were in the original report. And the final, and also in the graph that's in the back, shows that the concentrations of the chemicals over, over the course of a month. So the results, there's a continuing concentration of cadmium in the, in the sediments that's not going away. It's, the sedimentation rate in the reservoir is unknown, it's unlikely that the ongoing future sedimentation's going to provide any cap over those contaminated sediments. So, and even if it did put like a half an inch cap over the next fifty years, any of the bio worms or any other biotic critters that would be in this, you know, in that layer are going to just mix up that sediment. So it's going to be continually at the surface for as long as you can foresee. The concentrations that are leaching out into the, partitioning into the surface water do exceed and, or have potential to exceed the DEP's groundwater three standards. And so the real conclusion, there's been no, the conclusions would be, just in the summary there, that over the last twelve years, fourteen years, there's been no real change, and it doesn't go away. It's a metal, it's an element, it can't go anywhere, it's just going to sit there attached to the sediments. The flux study indicates that it's continually disorbing from the sediments and dissolving into the groundwater, into the groundwater, and then up into the surface water. And there is, appears to be, you know, continued transport of the cadmium from the source area to the deeper portions of the, of the basin, the reservoir. So the, you know, the bottom line, you know, what, and even, you know, the Woodard and Curran Phase Three report, you know, where they listed all the potential things you could do to clean up, they, you know, what their biggest item, they said, you know, for sure that would clean it up would be, you know, sediment removal. Unfortunately, you know, it's the cost issue is the prohibitive factor there at this time.
To put this sort of in context, the, as you mentioned, Woodard and Curran, that's a consultant company for Invenzus, and, and they've been doing the studies at the reservoir and, and also overseeing some of the work at, in Crack Rock Pond downstream of the reservoir. The DEP has given them approval for a, what's considered what they call a Class C RAO, which means that they have five years to evaluate and study the conditions at the reservoir. As we pointed out, no, no sampling on the reservoir has been done since nineteen ninety-eight, so it's been fifteen years now. They'll be collecting their first set of samples next month, or end of this month or early next month, at some of the same locations we sampled, to evaluate what the conditions are.
evaluate what the conditions are and, to, you know, look at that. But basically, they've got five years of sampling that they're allowed to do, and then reevaluate if there's anything that can be done to clean it up. So...
Just to give you an idea of the DEP and the MCP and the reports that Woodard and Curran done, there's three classes of closure, two of which are considered permanent, and they, which means you've either cleaned it up to a level where there's no risk, or there's an acceptable amount of risk. The third, which is the Class C RAO, the one that Woodard and Curran filed for this, is called the Temporary RAO, because it, at conditions now, does not meet no, no risk. There's risk because it's partitioning into the water at levels greater than the standards. And so it's not just a report in five years, it's a report every five years until the site is cleaned up. And they have to sample periodically between those five, probably every year, I think I read, or every six months.
Yeah.
I think they have to sample, basically, forever, until the laws change, the standards change, or it's cleaned up. So every five years, it'll be a monitoring report.
Yeah. Over the last 14 years, we've seen no change, so we don't expect to see much anything else change, but...
Was that surprising to you, though, to find no change?
Um...
For some reason, and I'm not a chemist, I thought the cadmium would oxidize eventually.
Well, what we found in the flux study is that with biological activity and so forth, there's a constant cycle that keeps on putting the, the cadmium back into solution into the water, and then as things change, and it drops back out, and, you know, it's just kind of in a constant recycling program.
Because you don't know how much is in the sediment.
Well, we do. We measured that, and the, the concentration of the sediments are very, very high.
It's the chart there.
So that's keeping, resupplying the ground.
It keeps on resupplying it, so...
Is it due to movement by prop or...
Well, well, you also have, you do, it's very shallow, so any major windstorm event, whether it's a northeaster or whatever, is going to stir things up, and you see a lot of suspended sediments and things like that. Or if you get motorboats out there with props and so forth, you can tell when they've gone through two. You, just a lot more suspended sediments that stir things up.
Mm-hmm.
What was kind of surprising is, you know, the measurements that were done on the reservoir 15, 18 years ago, in way of depth of water, really hasn't changed. So the amount of sedimentation to actually cover any of this isn't really happening much. There's enough biodegradation of all the leaves and all the bio matter that's in there, that it seems to be keeping pace with, you know, the degradation or the biological activity of the breaking down of this stuff seems to be keeping pace, and that's not, the lake's not filling up. So...
And that goes along with when we originally did the first town study, there was, the original depth study of the lake went back some 50 years, and we found in 50 years that the lake really hadn't filled. So having something to do with the peaty bottom, I would imagine.
It's a very soft bottom. I mean, you can, you can take rods and stick them down in and push 30 feet down, and it's, it's very soft.
Yeah. Well, the only material that's going in there is organics, really. There's no sediment source that could really fill it in.
Right. Which is not what you want either.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, okay.
So anyhow, the, as I said, the, where this stands with the state is they've seen our report, we've forwarded our report to InvenSys' consultant, they've got it, they were here last night, actually, reporting to the Conservation Commission about their plans to go ahead with the sampling. So...
Jim, you represented the board last year with a letter. Could you bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, that was at the transition. We had met, we had several meetings with the DEP, and Jay Bowes and this group, and that was at the transition when they're doing the Class C RAO decision. They had the consultant's report from InvenSys, they had all these guys could work in their professional reports. And I think the DEP was looking at it, and they did their risk benefit analysis. And they said, well, as, as they had said, there's a solution to remove the sediment, and there's a huge cost. And there's other solutions, like in the winter, during the ice, you put sediment over it, and let the ice melt, and it drops over, that's one thing. You guys had a suggestion of just hitting the hotspots as a pilot program, and you proposed that to DEP. So we submitted a letter, and I think the Board of Health may have as well, but they were on board, that basically said the cost benefit is way off because there's a bigger benefit and less cost, because there are ways to do it that aren't brought up by their consultants. So they took that under advisement, but they still went ahead and broke it down into every five years of testing. So it's a frustrating process, and it's kind of a wait and see. You wait five years, you test it. And I think they also put their own monitoring wells around to continue to do their testing, and this is probably part of that.
They're going to install one monitoring well, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I read this, and I was surprised that, you know, it went from a solid to a dissolved state. I don't know if that was new to you guys, but that surprised me. One, one statement you said, you said it, it does exceed, and then, did you correct yourself, it says it, it has potential to exceed?
In the, in the laboratory studies, the amount that dissolved or came out of solution from the sediment into, you know, dissolved state, at some, some...
Almost every test.
Almost every test, after a month, it reached the level where it was above the standard, you know, dissolved. That's laboratory.
So, so I, I think, I mean, the board wrote that letter, and then they started that new process. Now, you're coming in front of us just as an update, or you going to challenge the DEP again, or bring your studies to them again?
No. Well, there's, there's other things we want to report about that we'd like to bring up, and, and that we, we are investigating, something that we would like to challenge, but it's more with EPA.
Okay.
So, but for now, I think this is going to be what it is for the next five years, unless we can identify an issue that would cause them to feel that there's a, a new identified risk associated with the sediments staying where they are. And our discussions with them is they're unwilling to revisit this until something like that is identified, that there's an unacceptable risk hazard. And we're not anticipating that's happening anytime soon.
So those, to test that, is it Woodard and Curran, or...
Woodard and Curran, yes.
Are going to do, they get reported immediately, and if those exceed it, will that backtrack the process?
It could.
It could?
It could, yeah. They, they do, they report annually. They, they're going to be taking samples twice a year, and they report annually. Supposedly, the first round of sampling is in July or early August, and the first report will come out in January or February next year.
And do you get copied on those, or do you have to go to the EPA and ask for them? Is the town still on the list?
The town's still on the list, yes.
DEP.
Yeah.
You could get, you could get those online at the DEP.
Yeah.
The town, they sent a letter to the town, says it's available.
Okay.
The, I think that they will continue copying the town and the Conservation Department.
And you guys are not self-funded, but you have funds to pull up the invasive species in your, is there anything that the town can do?
Yeah, now, we...
To help your cause? Not saying financially, but is there something that you're looking to us?
Well, that's one of the things we're here to ask about. And so there's, the other program that we've got going on right now is we are treating the invasive species plants in the reservoir. And we've had two treatment programs, let me just go up here, two treatments for your guys' benefits, you know, break them next. I don't know if you can see it very well, but there's, there's the two northern coves up here, and we've been using, having a company called Aquatic Control Technology, and we've had permits from Conservation to treat these areas up and through here, and then also down in this area. And the invasive species primarily, I won't get into the plant types and so forth, but the treatment's going very well. We've done two treatments, we probably have a third one coming up. And, so that, that program is going on pretty well. We treated, though, entire reservoir, was it six years ago? I think it was six years ago.
Baby Gorge?
Four years ago? Well, anyhow, we treated the whole reservoir, and invasive species levels have dropped way, way down. Now it's just different hotspots, and, so we're, it's more of a controlled treatments going forward. So that's, that's another topic, and we have an update. And then the third topic is, we, we're notified by the EPA that they have not issued a NIPDS permit, an NPDS permit, which is a National Priority Pollutants Elimination Control, I'm not saying the right...
National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit.
Permit, thank you.
It goes to the Clean Water Act.
Yes. So, under the Clean Water Act, any industry that discharges to streams or surface water has to have a permit. And there's certain allowable levels of contaminants that they're allowed to put into streams. InvenSys has not had an active permit or an approved permit since 1998.
98 or 96?
Ninety, yeah, I'm not sure if it's 98 or 96. 96. They have not had an approved permit. We've asked to do an, a survey through Freedom of Information Act for both the EPA's records and the DEP's records, to see what other information has, is out there or that has been reported over that time period on any of their discharges. So it's not that their discharges disappeared, it's just that the permits lapsed and they never were reissued. They have, the EPA has come out and had two public hearings, and had, had two sets of public documents submitted in way of the proposed permit, agreements that would, they would have with InvenSys. One was done in, I don't have those dates with me either, but it was 2000...
It was the early 2000s.
2005, and then another one in 2010. And we've been in contact or correspondence with them, and they basically have said that they're just, they're just hung up with red tape or whatever. And they, they would probably act on issuing those. And there's a provision in the Clean Water Act that as citizens, we can write a letter to them requiring or, or basically putting the EPA on notice that we would like them to issue that permit. Because then they would, then they would, we'd know what's being discharged. There would be some guidelines that what could be discharged legally. And it's, it's not like it's zero. And they're, we're not saying that we want this permit, so there's nothing that can be discharged, but can be discharged within reasonable limits. We would like to have or have, bring you, probably in a month, a letter, and have you consider signing that letter to be filed, and then we're also looking at sending our own letter in. But we thought if we could get a letter from the Board of Selectmen and from a Citizens Group, that that would be a good thing to send to both the EP, primarily to the EPA, and put them on notice. We don't think that this will, would ever transpire to go to any kind of litigation. There's, there's provisions for Citizens Group litigations to force them to issue it. But I think that if they just know that there's somebody who's saying, hey, guys, do your job, you know, they'll listen. So that's, that's sort of another update.
So you want, you're asking to see the board again in a month?
Yeah.
It's a popular request these days.
Well, we didn't want to come in here with a letter and say, please sign this, and not have a chance to at least, you know, let you know what we're, what we're investigating. And, and we're just doing the, the review process is going on this month, and so next month, we should have the results of that. So we'll have some, some better statistics of, in what will be in the letter, and what has been, what is known as to what the discharges have been. So...
Jim?
When you, when you do send the letters, will you be sending them to the federal delegations from the state, you know, Representative Kennedy and the senators? You know, in order to put, let them know what the concern is, and then they can apply pressure to the EPA? That's what they're there for.
Yeah. We, that has been recommended to us also, yes. And that, that's an excellent idea. We will want to do that, because that's right. That's what they're there for.
That's what they're there for.
That's to let them know and put them on notice, and would that also be Senator Warren?
Right, Senator Warren and Senator Mackey. But never underestimate the power of a phone call from your representative.
Right.
Truly.
Yep.
Especially a US senator. So, or congressman. Can you, anything to add?
No, I'm all set. But you, you're saying that dredging is the only solution, or are there other solutions you're looking at?
To get the metals out, it really is the only solution. The other, the other solutions that were brought up in way of putting a layer on top, just going to make things more shallow. And the more shallow it is, the more erosion you're going to get, and that's, you know, what we would like to see is, you know, it be dredged so that we could actually even dredge it further. If, you know, our group would like to dredge it further so that we'd have less weeds. Because if it was a little deeper, you wouldn't have as much light penetration, you wouldn't have as many weeds, and, you know, that would be one of our solutions, and, and that's kind of what we were hoping that we could be doing. The, the problem is, is that we've got money to dredge, but we don't have money to dispose of what we dredge. So there's a, and there's a big delta between, you know, getting it out of there. I've, I've got quotes, I could have half that reservoir dredged to a couple feet deeper for a million, million and a half. But to get rid of the material once it's dredged is where the big money is.
Off to, shouldn't he actually be burned?
Can't burn metals, though. Metal's still...
You can separate them, another process.
Yeah.
Anything to add?
Thank you for the update.
The other thing we're here to request is, we used to have a member from the Board of Selectmen that would sit in on some of our meetings and stuff, and we were wondering if any of you would like to volunteer to be in more involved in our committee and, you know, have a liaison, a more active liaison with the, the board.
And Jim has been, for, for a while, came to a lot of the meetings and was, you know, very, very helpful, but we never, we haven't had an official liaison for a while, so we'd love to have an official liaison.
Okay. We want the board to think about it, and then let me know who would like to be, if you're available or not, and we'll go from there. All right? That way I don't put anybody, I'm not going to put anybody in.
When do you, when do you normally meet?
It's usually like a Tuesday evening.
That's not good.
First or second week of the month. Or Thursday. We have done Thursdays also.
Yeah, yeah.
Thursday, second week of the month. Yeah, it moves, it moves around.
It depends on vacation schedules and business trips.
Right, right. No, I understand.
Generally, once a month.
So you know what, Kim was my point contact, wants to touch base with me in a week, and then I'll have, let you know who from the board's going to be liaison, okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for that input.
Mark, could I just ask, they send us a draft of the letter before the meeting, so we have a chance to review it and then make comment before you have the final?
Yeah, just like you did with this, you know...
It won't be real long. It's probably going to be like a page and a half, so it's not going to be, you know, tremendous.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All the kids doing good?
Let's, yeah, let's hit action, so we can take a quick recess, and then we'll get right into everything else. Okay?
Mike Winrose-Lincoln, they're requesting permission to close Howard Avenue to Motorist on Saturday, July 13th, 2013, for their annual block body. And I'll make a motion that we allow this use to close Howard Avenue to Motorist on Saturday, July 13th, 2013, from 1:00 in the afternoon to 10:00 at night for the 16th Annual Powderhouse Neighborhood Block Body.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Okay.
Item two, I move that we renew the appointment of Paul, see Paul Dumas to the Norfolk County Advisory Board to a one-year term expiring August 1st, 2014.
Second.
Any more discussion? All's in favor? Five oh. Number three, John?
I move that we renew the appointment of Daniel L. Fallon as constable to a three-year term expiring on July 31st, 2016.
Second.
More discussion? More discussion?
Under discussion. Is this something that is competitive or other people or is it unlimited for this position?
I wouldn't say it's unlimited. They've had a series of people who have been doing it over the years and he's been on the list for...
So by appointing him for another term, we're not pushing somebody else out?
No, I don't think there's any other active requests, so...
Okay.
More discussion? All's in favor? Five four again, Paul, five, four. All right, number four?
This is a request by Peter W. Titlebaum, Chairman of the Wareham Board of Selectmen. He's seeking the support of House Bill H. 1115, which is an act relative to the definition of low and moderate income housing.
Yeah, I, I was reading that, his letter.
I'd like to study that some more.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. Anybody have any?
Well, I, I mean, I'm a little familiar with the bill.
Okay.
What this bill does, this bill has been filed many times before. What this bill does is it adds to the list of housing that's considered affordable, like mobile homes, in-law apartments and stuff like that. And what that does is it increases the town's affordable housing units.
Towards, yeah.
So that we are going toward the 10%. This bill, they've been trying to do something like this for many years. Anybody who's, any legislator who has dealt with 40Bs and it's mostly in the, in the more rural areas, they've been, it's an unfair advantage not to include mobile homes and in-law apartments.
Well, I can imagine a town like Wareham, which has multiple.
Exactly. And I spoke to Representative Barrows today about this. He's in favor of the bill and he is, he was going to ask the town of Norton and the town of Mansfield, where I brought it up, he said, "Well, you can talk," to see if, if those other two towns in, in his district would, would also support this legislation. It's, it's a good piece of legislation. It's legislation that they've been trying to pass in order to, to alleviate the stress on communities that are just, you know, approaching that 10% and if they, if they included the mobile homes, which is affordable housing, you know, it just takes the pressure off of...
June, do you know if this is being heard in any recent hearings coming up?
I'm, I'm not quite sure. I know it's, it's being spotted by Sue, Representative Gifford and when I spoke to Jay, he didn't say that there was a hearing coming up and everything, but they, they really think that with the possibility of, of outreach to the communities and if they will respond, that possibly this bill will pass.
The reason why I ask is I think it might make sense to check with Sharon. Sharon has been doing a lot.
Oh, she said they, they support it. I spoke to Sharon earlier today and the planning board is definitely in support of this. They've been, they've also been advocating for something like this to amend the 40, you know, the 40B.
Right.
There's a lot of opposition to it from developers and...
Yeah, I can, I can think of both sides here. We'll shuffle into our regular scheduled meeting. I don't think anything's moving this time of year at the House, is it?
Yeah.
You know?
That's when, that's when the thing...
I thought they were coming into an...
Yeah, but they, they still have, they still have, they don't have formal voting sessions, but they still have hearings.
Right.
And this is, this, this letter would be for hearings.
Right.
As, as evidence for, for hearing.
Yeah, I just, I'm not comfortable voting on it tonight. I just wanted to read the legislation. I appreciate your input. I will call Jay, I will call Timmeltie, I will, you know, make a few calls.
Yeah, and, and talk to, talk to Sharon on the planning board.
Right, exactly.
I mean, the, the planning board is dealing with, with the problems of not including the affordable housing like mobile homes. Let's face it, a mobile home is, that's affordable housing.
But it's not a fixed asset either, is it, is it, you know? I'm not opposed to it, I'm not for it, I just want to find out more about it. It's the last thing I read in the pack, I went, "Wow, that's pretty interesting," you know, kind of how it's...
Well, I understand how it would, you know, help a community sort of ward off 40Bs, but...
Well, it, it helps a community to reach their goal of 10%.
Right, Middleborough, Rain, Taunton, they've got, I don't know, they've got thousands. I mean, you see them on 495 and the side of the road.
I drive the Wareham a lot, an hour a lot.
They're everywhere, so...
I mean, I mean, this has been the problem since 40B, 40B was originally created to deal with like urban areas and then, you know, redoing urban areas. And then all of a sudden, it came out to the more rural areas and so, I mean, this is, this has been an ongoing problem, trying to reach that 10% for decades. And, and this is the, and like I said, these, this bill or bills similar to this have been filed, you know, like every session and, and it's because there's a need, there's a need to adjust the, the 40B bill.
Or the definition of affordable housing.
Right, right.
James, you got anything to add?
No, I think, I think the town would be wise to support it, but the opposition, I mean, the state's goals and objectives is to get more affordable housing. So their equation was based on not having trailer or mobile homes and rentals and in-laws and all that stuff. So if we take that out of the equation, it doesn't get the state where they need to get to. So that's, that's the dynamic. So each community wants to limit it to a certain point, the state wants to broaden it, the developers don't want any restrictions because it's very profitable if you don't have the 10%. But I think that the town would be wise and it, but I would like the planning board to make a recommendation because we could use that because, you know, I think we're eight and .5% or something, so it would be nice to have those numbers. The last town meeting, we had a warrant article that talked about funding affordable housing, so I, I think they're a lot more in tune to it and I think their letter or their recommendation would be a lot more to point than ours. We could use their recommendation in our letter.
So Bobby, could we ask planning board to...
I'll, I'll talk to Sharon about getting a recommendation. You want to put it on for the 23rd?
Yes, please. Here's the action again.
Yep.
No, I mean, we can still have the smell. Okay, so we'll move forward from that one and the last one is the...
Okay, this is a request by a Mr. Ayedal Abbas Faris and he's asking for a HECD license application to be approved. So I'll make a motion that we approve a two-year HECD license application on behalf of Ayedal Abbas Faris.
Second.
Any more discussion? All's in favor? All right, okay, and we're moving to executive session. We're going to take a five-minute recess before that, so everybody stretch their legs from there, but can I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session.
You need to state their reasons.
Oh, do you have that written?
Yes, I do.
Item one is pending litigation, Welder-Dutton. Item two is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or to contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically by Chief Roger Hatfield, Deputy Police Chief John Chandler and Town Manager Kevin Pagos.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Are we coming back out?
No, we're going to go...
We'll adjourn.
Adjourn, adjourn after the executive session.
So just add that.
So come out just to adjourn.
Solely to adjourn, okay. Hold on, Leo's giving me a correction there. Leo?
You, you, you have something to come out to announce.
Okay.
At least one item.
All right, so council is telling us we will be coming back to regular session and it could be quite some time. I would think it's going to be well over an hour.
Okay.
So... And Mark, did you want to note on the Welder-Dutton that that's actually going to be continued?
Yeah, we're not going to be using that type, but I didn't think we needed, Welder-Dutton won't be discussing executive session tonight, just so you know. All right, there was supposed to be an update by a couple of councils involved and there's nothing to update at this point in time. So we will be coming back into regular session according to Leo Pelgram, the Town Labor Council, so we'll call vote to go into executive session?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And oxygen is five zero. Okay, I'll see everybody back in five minutes, please.